We've seen the narrative making the rounds on social media. We've seen influencers telling their own side of the story. We've heard people complain about what happened here at the Dosumu building, when the place got burnt and the buildings came down. We heard some of the market people here, owners of buildings, owners of shops, owners of stores lament and cry to the government for help. But now it's time for us to bring the markets to the people and the people to the market. It's time for us to show you what exactly happened here. It's time for you to hear firsthand narrative from those who have been directly or indirectly affected. And it's also time for us to hear from the side of the government, what exactly will happen to the people here and how they will receive help. My name is Bernard Akede, correspondent from News Central Television. For those of you watching us here in the market, News Central TV is a Pan-African television station that has been running for five to six years. And we are very much concerned about the plight of the people. This is the second in our series of town hall meetings in the city of Lagos. And we hopefully intend to take this beyond Lagos and possibly beyond Nigeria. What we are doing here is to tell the story of the people who have been affected by things going on in this wonderful city. We started by speaking to affected residents of Jakondé Estate, where their buildings were demolished. That is still in progress and in process. Now we are here at the scene of Dosumu building fire and collapse of the building. What exactly happened here some weeks ago? Who were the people that were affected? These and more are some of the things that we're going to bring to your attention today. Again, my name is Bernard Akede. Thank you for joining us in the second edition of our town hall series. Now, we are here with several people, apart from all those watching us from across the globe and those watching us here at the market. To my right here, we have people from the market who have suffered losses. You can see them on the screen. We have owners of buildings. We have shop owners. We have tenants in the building. We have market men, market women, people who have been here for years, who have called this place their home for years. People have lost goods and properties worth hundreds of millions of naira. Am I correct? Trillions of naira as a matter of fact, trillions of naira. This market has been home to many of these people. Some of these people had their parents, grandparents start from this market. Am I correct? They had their parents also start in this market. Am I correct? They themselves have been in this market for years and they have grown their children here. Am I correct? They have accommodated tenants in this market, yes? And now they have been faced with this devastation. Their question now is, where do we go from here? Am I correct? And that is exactly why we are here. We will not be able to introduce everybody who is here. We will not be able to introduce all the market leaders. But please permit me to recognize everybody who is here. Every market leader is recognized. Every tenant is recognized. Every landlord and landlady is recognized. Everybody who has one thing or the other to do or who had one thing or the other to do in this market is recognized. But please, as we recognize ourselves, I would just like to ask that we give ourselves a round of applause as we say thank you for coming here. Thank you so much. Now, besides the people in the market, to my left here, we also have others who have decided to grace this occasion with us. We have SSA to the governor. We are glad to have him here. He is going to be speaking on the side of the government to let us know in the course of this conversation where we are right now in the discussions between the people and the government. We also have people from insurance to tell us what we stand to gain, what the people here in this market can get from insurance. Was there an insurance policy covering the entire market, covering the building or buildings that were affected, covering the people and their goods, those who have lost? And if there wasn't, what can we do going forward? Again, can we give them a round of applause? And we are thanking them for coming. We know that it is difficult. We have suffered losses. But we are hopeful that we will reach a resolution and a conclusion. As we did in last town hall meeting, we started with an opening prayer because we have to commit everything to God, whether we like it or not. We have suffered losses. But we know that God Almighty is the only one who can and who will help us in the places where we have suffered. Today is Friday. Jema service is not far. We will not take so much of the time so that people can attend the service. But again, let's recognize God who has made it possible for us to be here. Can we have somebody that will take the opening prayer for us? One Christian prayer and the Muslim prayer, very quickly, and then we continue from there. Again, you are watching live on News Central Television. My name is Bernard Akede. This is going live on DSTV channel 422 and on Star Time Channel 274. We're also streaming live on YouTube.
Praise the Lord. Please shall we pray? In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Father, we thank you for bringing us all here at this place. We bless you, Lord, for we know that in everything that happens on earth, you have a purpose for it. Father, we gather this place, oh Lord, to receive consolation from you and from people. Daddy, we pray that as we gather here, may you never leave us in two hundred in the name of Jesus. As many that lost their goods, we that lost our shops, our buildings and our properties. Lord, we are here this afternoon believing in your name that this gathering will wipe away our tears in the name of Jesus. As we continue, may you continue with us. May you make this gathering a peaceful one. That at the end, your name may long be glorified forever. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Can I hear a big amen? God bless you.
Thank you so much. Now, as we go on, I said earlier that we cannot recognize everybody. So many people are present here, some representing others. But especially, we would like to thank Alaja Medina Bakary, who helped us in the organization of this. Alaja, can you please just wave your hand so that we can see? Thank you so much, Alaja Medina Bakary. She is the one who has been helping us to gather all of what we have together and she has really been instrumental. I would also like to bring forth my colleague here, Marshall Anthony, who was here initially when the fire incident broke out while the building was coming down. There's also Adeshe Waudushoga. You may have seen the video of one lady, one reporter, that was reading the news and the building came down behind her. She works with News Central TV. Please, can we put our hands together for her? Fortunately, she's on leave at the moment, but you agree with me that she did a fantastic job. While she was reporting, the building came down behind her. She moved to safety, but she continued reporting while that was going. That's a young lady. And may I remind you that that was during the period of Ramadan. She was fasting that time. But that's what we do at News Central. And then there was a cameraman, Thomas Tilly, who was holding the camera. He did not move so that everybody would see what was going on. The building fell, everybody ran. He stood there. Thomas, right now, is still working. As we speak, he's in those states accurate for the party primaries. Please, can we put our hands together for them and for News Central TV? That's what we do here. Marshall Anthony was also here with us. He was here to give reports. He came here several times to follow up with the story. We have our managing director and editor-in-chief of News Central TV. I'll mention his name, but towards the end, I'll introduce him. He is the one who came up with the idea of the town hall meeting, saying that as Lagosians, as people who, whether you are from Lagos or not, if you live here, you are Lagosian, yes? You have built your industry, built your empire here. And he said, "We cannot be here and not talk about the plight of the people." His name is Mr. Kyode Akinti. We would introduce him later, but please, can we just give him a round of applause? This is appreciation. This is the second of the series, but it's not going to be the last. We are going to go on. Dr. Olajide Abiyodu Babatunde, special advisor on urban development. He's also here. We're going to be speaking with him eventually. We have Mr. Benga Oyeringde, who is Honorable Commissioner, Special Duties and intergovernment, if I'm not mistaken, intergovernment relations, I believe. Intergovernmental relations. Thank you so much, sir. And we have Honorable Bola Olumekbon. He's a special advisor, Center Business District, also here. Please, can we put our hands together for them? Now, the beautiful thing about this is, we've been hearing what the government has been saying on the news. Some people misinterpret that on social media. But we are happy that they are here now so that they can say it live for everybody to see. We have hundreds of thousands of people watching us live and that is the reason why we are here. Moving on straight to the program. Earlier, I mentioned that we've had the narrative from different angles. But now we want to hear from somebody who was here when this fire broke out. We know that different people have different accounts of what happened. After hearing from him, we are also going to take the account of certain people who can tell us what they may have lost. When we came here earlier, some people were telling us, even over the phone yesterday, Marshall, my colleague, spoke to a lady and she was crying considering the things she has lost. Somebody, I said millions of naira, they said no, trillions of naira. So we will hear from a few people. We're going to hear from two landlords and then three tenants. Unfortunately, we cannot take everybody's account. But we hope that we have this representation to give us this account. Now, we're going straight to hear from someone who I spoke to earlier. He's going to tell us, give us an account of what happened on that day while the fire broke out, the places it affected. Ordinarily, people are saying, "Oh, Dosumu." But we got to know that it's not only Dosumu that was affected, no? Pedro was also affected, am I correct? Dosumu was affected, am I correct? Which other area again? Exactly. Which other area again? Idoumagbo. So it is beyond what we saw on social media and that is what we are going to hear now. So please come forward. Let us have your full name while you give us this account and then we hear from others. Just two minutes, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name, Olajide Said. So... Okay, okay. So, as to say... Okay, okay. Eka song, everybody. Orukomi ni, Olajide Said. So, Gagabi, amwele to shikbetu kale. Monika so, shoki, nepantu sheleni bi. Gagabi, on the night of April, around 11 o'clock. So, everybody busy, one she business one. Suddenly, we had a fire attack at number 10 Dosumu. So, we rushed to there to just see how we can quench the fire. But suddenly, the thing gets over everybody. Before we can say one, two or three things, three buildings, four buildings have gone in the time of, let's say, 10 minutes. 10 minutes, maths. 10 minutes, maths. So, four buildings have gone. That is how everything just started.
Do we still have an idea of what exactly caused the fire? There are different stories we are hearing. Some people say, "Somebody's generator was burning. He threw the generator away." So the petrol, yes? Okay, so we are trying to, do we have an account? Auto one there? Okay. Yes, Alaja Dosumu, I'm going to call you very soon. In fact, you are the one we're calling next. But let's hear from the people. We are calling you next. Amabwajo?
My name is, good afternoon, good morning, whatever the time is. My name is Kujua Bimbala Rafiat. My building happens to be the building across the main building that caused the fire. It was right on my face because we already opened. It was like 11 something. Everybody already settled in for the day. So, we just said fire and I was attending to a customer. I mean, normally, when he says fire or something, I don't usually look around what's happening. So my boy just said, "Ah, yajumon, yajumon, see fire across." Because I had a fire extinguisher, because the last time we had an issue in that area, they asked everybody to get one or two to put in their shops. So one of my people around me just came to my place to pick up a fire extinguisher and there was another person going to the next building to pick up so to try to rescue what was going on there. But fortunately, I just saw people throwing something for mop. Basically, I didn't see who the person was. But I saw them throwing kegs, white kegs, because I could believe that that kegs was chemical. Because the paint building of that house is a place that it paints. The painters that does work in the premises. So they were throwing several paints, kegs down. At the same time, they were throwing petrols. Were we saying that what's going on, that people stop throwing things? You should wait for them to try and carry the kegs of petrols and calm down. Because the guy that took a fire extinguisher at my place carried a keg of petrol, tried to rescue, to take it all the way to the junction of Agarawu to try and rescue. But before I knew it, it was less than, because the moment they threw that thing down, my building was a false building that the fire casted. And it was right in my shop. So I had to rescue my life because I even had the injury on my hand and my other guy who had one. So we needed to just come out. So we couldn't take nothing unless, it's not even up to five minutes. The building collapsed. Our building collapsed before the building that cast fire. Because the building that cast fire was still burning. The last floor and the floor after that was still burning. But our building already collapsed. Under five minutes, it's gone. And that was what I saw because I couldn't even take it. That was the last thing I had. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. That is a short account of one eyewitness. The second eyewitness, but after this, we are going to go straight to people who lost buildings and who lost properties. Immediately after this, we're going to call Alaja Dosumu. We've been hearing Dosumu, this is Dosumu building, Dosumu market. Let's meet with Alaja herself and we'll hear from her. And after her, we'll hear from other people as well. But then this is the second eyewitness account we are going to take, or the third rather.
My name is Abulama Ajnokoue. On this fateful day, already shit. So I don't expect, because there is a fire incident at fateful before that day. When someone come and call me, Ajnokoue, there is fire. I thought it's, don't worry, you see cloud, that is a fateful area. Let another person come, say, "This is not fateful though. This fire is nearby." What I did immediately that, because in our association at Pedro, we have fire extinguisher in each building. So I had to consult every one of them, giving me the fire extinguisher. I go there direct to face the fire with fire extinguisher. When I reach this first building to the actual building, I challenge with my own fire extinguisher. I use first one, I use the second one. When I got back again to go and get another fire extinguisher, I insult someone to go and go to the office and be more fire extinguisher. What I noticed that the fire is not burning at the top. It's burning from the down, maybe because of those things that they drop. So when I got there the third time with fire extinguisher, I see the fire is already beyond fire extinguisher power. So I tried to use the fire extinguisher, maybe it can save more building. But my target is to nearly the fire to that building below. But unfortunately, because of all what they are throwing down, make it not possible. Before I get down from that building, the fire already reached my building. In my presence, it entered my shops. I see everything burned. So it was so pathetic, I can look, ah. Between, because it's not up to 10 minutes. What I'm saying is not 10 minutes. Between five minutes, it already reached about six, seven buildings. Because of this incident, we have to evacuate our people to other area. So we try as much as best to make sure that the building that affected is not beyond that number 20 and number 22 Dosumu. So we try to mobilize all these area boys and everybody to make sure that we put in fire, pure water, whatever is available to make sure that it's not affected the other building.
Thank you very much. Now, we've heard how the fire started from eyewitness accounts. In the past four years, I have come to these markets, I have covered, this will be the fifth fire incident I've covered here. Unfortunately, we've been having repeated fire incidences. Somebody is correcting me. This is the sixth actually. And another point of our interest is to see how we can actually stop these recurrent fire incidences in these markets. We cannot continue to see people suffering from fire incidences. People's sources of livelihood going away. Things that people have built over 30 years go away in five minutes. In just five minutes. How do you explain that? Now, we've listened to people who have told us what they saw. I want us to listen directly from people who owned buildings that have been standing here for more than 20 years. And then in 10 minutes, those buildings came down with everything inside. Alaja Dosumu, we met her this morning. And our conversation with her is not something that I would keep to myself. I would like her to share. It's a very sad conversation we had, but I would like her to share. Alaja, please join us. Esayoba? Yes, ma'am.
Eka arao gubuli, ani shofuemi, ani shofuara. Unto sheleni, owa in shock for me. Immediately, in more fire, looking number 10 Dosumu. Mo sari, mo she help, 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 help. Ewa ayepu wa idiotori olonu, amwato losoke. Bubuke di tori, non tue wewe esisale. But again, tue wewe esisale. Agbarawu, tori kosi omilarandi wan bi ba, talifie yeb. Bode asheng kasiye, Baba Sumoju, onra waba yu. Onra waba yu. Emi oti ri no, tonoru suke. Ton soru, innoto doyin soru. So, 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 hu, hu, tu, tu, tu. Mo ti ri weli. Onno ro si ti ti ba yu. Ti ti Dosumu. King Dosumu, lo ndi si streeting eh, ti ti de damdam. Akito ye Dosumu. Baba lami, lo di tobi Dosumu, lo nde akito ye. Si ti ti mowa. Ibelobi mesi, number five Dosumu. I'm going to 70 years old now. Which work I want work? The building way that they give to me, everything don't last. It don't burn finish. Both my shop, both my store, everything gone. Please, help. God go help you too. Please. Mo bebe. Bibi ishemapaga. See Dosumu streets. I don't want any edas pokon. I don't want Dosumu again. That don't cause all this trouble. Dosumu tro jo noye. Dosumu to tikbe, amwato on she edas loy. Ti Dosumu tutumba de no more edas. Emi omo Dosumu moduroy. Amwala lele, innoto den bonti niy. Bogo bangeto long, bogo lo, bo lo, bo yu akpada se yu long. Modu pala de olonpe, kosi tokunu yu. Eh, nefamo yu diyoga. Eh, ne wata dani biti, idamuti mama ba yu. Illeti babati fisilela, imoyodo, timonde. Ome oko, anshisho, property ti babafi lefu wala manje. Bogo property yelotjo noye. Kolon sha nu, kobami dapadale, wa. Na eyepa de, eto na eyep.
We sympathize with Alaja Dosumu, all the tenants who lost properties in that building. For those who don't understand Joruba, the little like I understand, I would translate. Alaja explained what happened, how that fire happened. She explained, she talked about the building. She said she has never seen a fire like that before. She also talked about people in Lagos here. She said what they survive on is the property left behind by those who left those buildings for them. That is what they survive on. She is almost 70, almost 70 years old. Which work can she work? There's nothing she can do again but that building where she was eating from. Now, the noises you are hearing, we have people on the other side. You will see that very soon. They are raising placards. These are people who have also suffered losses here. You'll see them in the course of the program, asking for support, asking for help. Alaja was in tears just now. And there's so many others like that. We're going to call a second building owner as well, who's going to explain to us, who's going to tell us what they to have lost. Let's see if you can put into account, if we can even quantify some of the things that have been lost in that fire. Who's the second landlord that we want to call? Who's the second landlord that's coming? Alaja Modino? Alaja Modino?
Orukomi ni, eka song gubule o, akorage o, alage fige o. Bogo konto sonu la, wala ndakpada fuani, lokbo, lokbo, lokbo. Ibita aloko reciba, anoko recia, wawa debeyo la, ya nobi wa jolo. Orukomi ni, alage mo di not bakari. Adu pafalonu, unto sheleni bi ba, ariweli. Start to do pafalonu. Ni pe achofemi, ade shofomo, ofo dukia la she. But long non le shefuwa, long dadakpada refuwa. Ya nobi wa jolo, Sala Allah, wa ali wa sala. Ni koto sheleni ondi, nae. Oni agbaraku pa, muti de shop. Ni arwo jo, ade jo kosi tati pateton. Mochongbo ti si sami she fire, inon, inon, moni nokke. Ege, inuno Dosumu. Bode botabai, inuno shop, mo oké. Mori noye, moni, ah, inon mari. Owani kalosino store, kaloko oja. Mono ja wala feko, inoyo le debi ba yu. La ti daxion, si odowa, si number 26. Inoyo le debey. Ino wala fe de 24, 26, kosi noto le debey. Afile, konon, inoyo konfo, na afibeyo, ino. Ode info, ofo, ofo, otu wa, otu wa nuworo. Pedro, otu wa nuworo, akito ye. Moni ha, egunowolele. Ah, ma safu si sami, moni, tabakwa, amolomolo, kilafe mawi. Nori noye. Eka ka file, dukia alojo. Ni koto ochofoni, bi ba okpo. Okpo, afikolo, gobo, aloju. Kadera anubba, kara anubba, kara anubba. Tori, olon lo le she, olon de lele, rala anusiwaa. Olasira, rala anusiwaa, olai ya nobi wa jolo, ni odi juwelo.
Ashemah. Now, very quickly, we are going to take three, just three shop owners. We cannot take everybody, but three shop owners who will quickly, in one minute, tell us what they were selling, what they lost and how it's affecting them and their families. And then after that, we are grateful. We have representatives from the Lagos State Government who will tell us where our conversations are now with the government. We are going to take three shop owners. Amabwajo?
Orukomi ni, Alaja ka fires bada. Anta wodana mosu, lilon, packing shirts lilon, anga. So, number 40, inile Baba Yanni. Karibu kotu, Ajnokoue of Lagos, 40 stroke 3. Olowa waju, batino ere bere. The other one, otu wakale, enoti bere. Akoti, emwo pe, do not enjoy, ya, wo, ya de suelosoke. Owani ofoja, wo le, wo be fire extinguisher sae losoke. Ero ko gon. Nbatama fidye, inoyi tin joke on fuki rini. On fuki, otu fosa anititi. Ah, ri no ba, rela itja, asidela ye. Nbatama fi padha, di, owa, otu losoke. Oti be, wo le, oti babo, ojo. Katoni kakpada mo, otinjo la teni. Ateni, enoti bere, ojo gogo ekonle ni. Eh, loni oti ide go, itora wa aroni. Obakonje go, afikolo, onro wa aloju. Tori ito sheleni, koda, koye, ojo, agbarakbago. Kolon ro wa alojuni. Ki jobagde jo, kosha nuwa, koshiwa jeje.
Okay. I'm Mrs. Tishola, TA. I'm at Pedro number 22. The incident, we really don't know how it happened, but it was under two to three minutes. Ajnokoue really tried for hard with the fire extinguisher, but the thing is beyond every other thing. We don't even know what to say. I said pinjamas, chirimpan, singlets. We lost everything at Pedro. Number 20, number 22, it affects us at Pedro. We lost our shops and we lost our prior stores. Every garden thing, we couldn't pick a pin.
If we ask to quantify what you lost, how much did you lose?
We can't quantify. We have stores, I have three stores. And so many other people. There are some stores that are on the whole floor as a store. And we have shops, our shops, all liquid with quality things. And we have shops, our shops, all liquid with quality things, underwear and pajamas. Everybody at number twenty and twenty-two, Pedro, we lost everything. So, we are, we are begging people to assist and help us out. Please, thank you.
My name is Mrs. Ozzy Amajani Faokochi. They know me as Mamé Jima. I had to, I had a shop at number twenty and twenty-two Dosumu, I had two shops there. I've been in that Pedro for over twenty-five years. So, I believe all my life savings, they are in that shop. Because when the fire started, we didn't know it would get to our building. We were just looking and saying that it will not get to our building. Before you know it, it is not even up to five minutes, it got to our building. We had to run away, we had to run away for our lives. So, I believe the government will help us. I did not remove anything from my, I have two shops, I have two shops there. I did not remove anything, but I'm believing God, that God, in his infinite mercy, will help all of us, in Jesus' name.
We can only take one more, one more person, and then we move on.
Hello, Salama Alekoum. I'm a community, it is a bad guy, I can tell you. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a good guy, I'm a good guy. But I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a good guy, I'm a good guy. On the twenty, on the twenty, last month, it burned into you know. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. The same thing, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a good guy, I'm a good guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a good guy, I'm a good guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a good guy, I'm a good guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a good guy, I'm a good guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a good guy, I'm a good guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy.
We know there are so many people who want to talk, but we can't take everybody. We're just going to take one last person, and then there's others that we're going to talk about.
My name is Mrs. Obi Obah. On that fatal incident, I was not around, I traveled. This, my shop is at number seven Dosumu. We lost everything, me and my husband have labor for twenty-something years, as it stands now. I don't have any hope for where I get money to feed my children for now. Everything gone. My packing store, I have a warehouse opposite Dosumu, but it was under renovation, I have to move everything I have there to Dosumu. Two days after the fourth incident, I lost everything I have in this market, in Lagos, as a whole. Thank you. Please, I plead the government for assistance to help us, for the sake of my children and other people here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all right, here's the last, please, the last.
Yeah, I can't go, I'm a bully. I'm a community, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. Around ten thirty to eleven, one in the shop me, more than Shannon in the shop me. So, me paint house, it is a bad guy. Top floor be, store me one be. So, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. So, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. But I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. So, I want to try a lot to, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. More the first one, I'm a good guy, more the second one. But more the third one, it is more, it is a bad guy, it is a bad guy. It is a bad guy, it is a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. But, but I'm a bad guy, the first floor, okay, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. Ah, the baller, I should struggle, I'm a fool. Most of us, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. So, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. Chemicals, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. From the other building to the other side. Chemicals, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a good guy, I'm a good guy. Chemicals, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. Store me one, okay, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. But I'm a bad guy, it is a bad guy. So, at the shop, at the store, everything, ah, I'm a good guy. So, I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad guy. Federal, there, the federal, I'm a good guy. I'm a bad guy, I'm a bad 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 guy.
Okay, the last, the last we will take.
I'm Medias, Allison. Uh, number ten Dosumu has been my mother's selling point from when I was young, maybe two years. So, I took over the shop from her. And that day, I traveled, I wasn't around, I traveled to London for two months, I locked my shop. People from U S London start calling me, "Go to your shop, go to your shop, there is fire in Dosumu." And I was like, "What fire?" I planned to open my shop after the heat, and I'm like, "Fire? Am I, what can I do?" Anyway, I came. Coming to Dosumu, I was told, I even saw my shop. Fire is gushing out like hell. My store, my, I used a whole floor in number seven Dosumu, that's where my storage is. I just offloaded two forty-feet container with what I've got in the past, before I left to London. Everything went, and my shop went away. And I'm, even the number seven Dosumu and number ten Dosumu building fell right in front of me. I was standing there around three thirty, three, three thirty. And I was told that is a generator, whatever that happened, that somebody was trying to repair a generator. And the guy didn't open the generator, and he poured petrol inside. And that's when the fire blasted, and the guy had to run for his life. And coming, then, the guy panicked, he didn't even call nobody, he just left. And people had to come back, to come and see what they can do. This is my brother that just spoke last, Papa. Came with a lot of extinguisher to try and see what they can do. They had to run, because it's too much, it's overpowered everywhere. And that's what happened. And they said they were throwing chemicals and petrol from upstairs. And you know, my number seven Dosumu store, it was on this side. This side of the building, and number ten Dosumu is on this side of the building. I was surprised that a fire from seventh crossing over to the other road. It's a shock. We are just begging the government, because right now, we are penniless. We are penniless. Trillions, my sister, my sister, Marafa, Allison, she lost three buildings. She lost three buildings, and her husband lost a building. This is too much, this is too much, it's not something we planned for. We just beg the government, federal government, Lagos State, they should help us. Help us, they shouldn't give us fake promises. They should not say something, and later, they'll just abandon us on the side. No, let them do something for us, we are begging. Whatever they say, they should do it, and don't give money to the landlords, give it to we. You can help the landlords, but at the same time, we that we are shopkeepers, store owners, which you should help us, help us. That, we are writing names every day, we don't want our names to just throw under one office. We want it to work on it and give us something. I will come out again, please, help us, we are begging, thank you.
Alaja, before you go, has there been any communication from the government yet to the market?
No, not yet, someone who just came and talked, 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 and all he said is, "Any, any house, no pity or no pity, no pity, no feelings." They don't act like they have blood in their veins, yeah. He's, he come and talked, 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 talked. All he said is, "Any building that don't have paper, they are going to demolish it." They are going to demolish it. They don't talk like they have feelings. They don't talk like they have feelings. They said, "Any, any house that doesn't have paper, they are going to demolish it." And they started using their bulldozer to spoil everything more for us. They started using their bulldozer to spoil everything. Then, even when I came that day, I look at the fire people, all of them are standing, doing nothing. Doing nothing. I had to shout on them, I said, "We need water, we need water, go to water, go and pull water, go to, eh, eh..." Beach, go and bring water for us, we need water. And they said, "Alaja, don't act like this, we have used raw water, we have used raw water." I said, "Water." You want the whole Dosumu to burn down? You guys are just standing there, looking, this is unfair, this is unfair. Please, government, do something, do something, thank you.
Thank you, Alaja. Unfortunately, we can't take everybody, we can't take everybody, please.
All the, all the people, that they said they should come and rescue us in Dosumu, they should come and rescue, they are selling our metals, all our metals, they are selling it. They are selling it. Is it supposed to be like that? Is it supposed to be like that? No. Even, apart from that, they are selling goods, the goods they see, that is not burnt, they are selling it. They are, even the, the fire brigade are telling us, "You didn't give us money." We don't give you us money, they don't have pity, they don't have mercy. How? One policeman is telling me, I should move out of the way, I said, "Can't you see what is happening?" He said, "Go in the fire," I said, "Don't bloody tell me that, don't fucking tell me that." He's telling me, "Go in the fire." I said, "You stupid man, you are here." Police is supposed to be a friend of the people, not to bully people. You are supposed to be a friend of the people, you don't bully people.
We totally understand the emotions that you are seeing right now. The emotions that the people are bringing out now. We can see the feelings that they are having. We see, and that's why we are here, that is why we are here. We understand your plight, and that is why we have come here. So that what you are seeing, what, what is coming out is not just audio noise. It's not just social media noise, it's not just newspaper noise. That's why New Central TV is here, so that we can take your voice, we can let the people see your plight, we can let them hear what you are saying, and even hear what you are not saying. Now, what Alaja just said about people taking the leftover things here, nobody has heard that before. We are hearing it for the first time. But we are grateful that we have members of the government, like you mentioned, there are officials of the government who are also here, and we are very thankful that they came. We are happy that they have come. We know that the governor was here, but he cannot be here every day, and that is why he has officials here. I'm very happy that we have some here, and I would like to call Dr. Alajide Abiyodun Babatunde. He's a special advisor, EGIS, and urban development, Lagos State. Please, can we put our hands together, it is good that they are here. It is good that they are here, so that they can respond to what you have said, and they can tell us where we are now with conversations concerning what to do about Dosumu and other affected places. Thank you so much, sir.
I will speak Joruba in English. Mommy, mommy, mommy. Eh, 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 eh. She a boy, eh, eh, eh. Ah, the real lady, mom. Ah, the real lady, mom. So, I'm a man, I'm a fool, I'm a man, I'm a right, meaning, she a boy. Ah, the real lady, mom. So, let me speak English. First, let me, let me, um, express the support of the governor for this town hall meeting. You know, Mr. Governor has asked that the Honorable Commissioner for Special Duties, Mr. Bengao Unidy, who is sitting right here on my left, the Honorable Special Advisor, Central Business District, and myself, the Special Advisor, EGIS, and Urban Development should come here to represent him. We've also been joined by the Permanent Secretary, Director General, Lasema, and also the DG of the Safety Commission. We have quite a number of our other staff who are sitting around, you know, just to honor this gathering. Um, thank you very much, I just wanted to mention that as we go. So, we have listened to the accounts by the owners of the building. We have also listened to the accounts by the shop owners who are their tenants, and also concerned citizens of Lagos State. And I want to say that the accounts are near correct. Particularly, the fact that at number ten Dosumu, a generator was working, powering a building. And while that generator was working, maybe the fuel was going down, and the victim, because he's also a victim, the primary victim, tried to refuel the generator, and while he was doing this, the generator started burning. So, and he had several jerrycans of petrol, you know, on the, on the topmost floor, where he was powering this generator, and he felt that the best thing for him to do, so that, I mean, the building itself does not get completely burnt, was to throw down all those jerrycans of petrol. You know, and as you have heard, this building also contains some chemicals and some highly inflammable materials that were being sold there, you know, which also helped, you know, to propel the, the burning fire. I think, first, I brought a bad guy, I told Joe Toro. You know, and, you know, Mr. Governor was here. You know, we did not even know that he was going to come here on that day, because he did not inform us. We had a town hall meeting, you know, because, I mean, I just saw. one ito toha taba de bi oto eh ja so. One ita makparo amaku. Tama soto amaku, eh che je kaku soto. Our canopies were on that side. The intention was for us to have a town hall meeting. And we invited quite a number of people, including community leaders, the local government chairman, and even our leader, that's Fuad Okie, he was here with us. So, but Mr. Governor came on the spot inspection. He was going somewhere else. He was going to Badagri. But he made it a point that he wanted to come and see what was happening in Dosumu. I also know that the day before, he had spoken to the Commissioner for Special Duties, and he wanted to come. Even at the dead of night, it was late. I know the Commissioner for Special Duty advised that if he will come, you know, he should give us some more time because the site was still active, and we needed to put some things in place. So we had a town hall meeting. So we actually engaged the people. And we reached some form of agreement. And Governor made some pronouncements. Let me say it here and now. It is wrong for anybody to put a generator on top of a building. It is wrong. It is one of the causes of this fire, and it is very, very unfortunate. What is even worse is for us to try to fuel a generator when it's working. Even when we go to Phili Station, they tell us to put off the engine of our car and not even use our mobile phones. So we should understand that safety first, because that is how we can protect lives and property. The governor recognizes, the government recognizes, I said governor and the government, that, you know, property has been lost here. But ah dukwe, dukwe eh mikoko oshonu. You know, we should thank God for that. You know, because if one person had died, ingota anso eh kola mama so. You got auto shuffle. Ah mobashema explain fumo. Dukwe awambere dukia nibi. But di tope eh okoko oku, ah dukwe for long. So it is also wrong for people to store petrol in their building. Whether on the ground floor or anywhere, it is wrong. There are ways by which you can store those products. That is why, you know, the Department of Safety, the Permanent Secretary Lasema, they are here. There are people that can explain these things to us. This is a town hall meeting. Before the town hall meeting, the stakeholder meeting that we held on that day, we had also addressed people here and explained that time has come, that it is not only fire extinguishers that we have advised that people should have in their buildings, that we are also going to appoint what you call fire marshals. The fire marshals will live with you. They are going to be members of your community. They are going to be part of you. They will be your brothers, your sisters, and children. To stop anybody that they find bringing petrol. If you see somebody who says he's scarring a jerrycan of water, the first thing the fire marshal will do is to check whether that thing is actually water. You know, they say, "See something, say something." Say it! So if you see somebody, toma huwa ida, you know, community, please bring the person to book, even before you hand the person over to the police. Eh toki, si nu building, o toka and they over for police. Eh toke generator so building, o toka ja generator eh wasi le. Ni to ri ruu koba in. You know, now, I mean, people have asked us the question. But you see, emas eh kwe mi mosoro, because I'm not the governor. Even though we are representatives of the governor. And when governor sends representation for this kind of thing, it cannot be one person. That's why you see that we are three, we are four, we are five, we are six. However, you know, I understand the organizers of this program have also invited banks and also invited insurance people. You know, according to the building regulations for Lagos State, mumbey warning, there are different kinds of insurance. Ele ti sheleno, solution ni ke je kawa. But going forward, mumbey warning, muro warning. There are different kinds of insurance. There's what you call homeowner's insurance. Eh toni building gokofurai. Ko make sure eh ko o insure building eh. There are other, you know, third-party insurance. To lake ba eh toni building, o le ma insure building eh. But ko insure building other people around the room, just in case to my je kwe, by his own accident or something for a building, burns another person's structure, so that the insurance company can pay. Then even we, who are tenants, must also insure our property that we have in those buildings. Do not rent a house that does not have insurance. Make sure that you also have insurance for your own property. And if you have adjoining properties, ask your neighbors whether they have insured their house and also insured you against incidences like this. But going forward, Mr. Governor came here. The reason why he came here, because we all know, Governor Babajide Olusola Songolu is a compassionate, kind governor. Che beni eh abebeko. Che beni eh abebeko. Toma ajeh beni. Tama fara bale, ta gbon ko tuon sonjoye. One ikwe amashi audit. You be audit ye. Amah find out ah o ti oni shop ni nu ah o building. Mo sa eh kwe, amah find out kiniru koto wa ta. Ka one le. Bi ashema help one. Che eh oko, denja wa de, ah o gofura one. Wati ma bekini in Losi Esco. What you call the State Executive Council. Impossible. Wati ma bekini not there do ah ones of assembly. Because budget is a budget and it is a law, and the governor must obey the laws. However, he has the machinery and he has the powers to do whatever he has to do in an emergency situation, just at his eyesight. It happened during Covid. So he has set up a committee, just in case you think he's not doing anything. That committee is called Dosumu Intervention Committee. The committee is headed by Commissioner Benga Oyiride. I, Olajide Abiyodun Babatunde, ema loi bo mikbo, we are God of Mission Secretary here, Kimaba Okowi. Then we have other members of the committee, which includes the SA CBD, the Commissioner for Physical Planning, the General Manager Building Control Agency, the Permanent Secretary, Director General Lasema, the DG Safety, the Chairman of Lagos East, Lagos West, your representative in the House of Assembly, Honorable Lara Olumegbon, and also a committee leader, Fuad Okie. Se mo bagu anybody. No, bagu anybody. And we have had our eh eh led in the sun. We have had our inaugural meeting just a few days ago as directed by Mr. Governor. In fact, I have only just, as the secretary, I have only just shared documentation. Just as assessment form, temaferry, kemarokero langpa. Abi, it's just I'm waiting for your approval. We can share it with you, so that you'll see what is written on the form. So our governor is a talk and do governor. Kinu okwe one? Is a what? Is a talk and do governor. Toma sorrow, beno lo shimari. Talk and do. Yes. So, there's a very, our ni subcommittee maji. Ema agbo, our ni subcommittee maji on there, this steering committee, which is Dosumu Intervention Committee. Ema agbon gotimo so, ema agbo, ema agbo mi. Omoi. Eh boi, aburoi. Member, you know Lagos Islandi, Honorable Bola Olumegbon, our ni Chairman Working Committee. Kinu osa? Our ni Chairman Working Committee, one de la we otumba o she she. Sherry, Honorable Terito Jokoey. She is the one who is going to do the enumeration. This is a special enumeration. The forms are going to be filled. You are going to have the passport photographs of everybody. So there is, the form identifies whether you are a land owner, you are the owner of the building. Governor will support you if you are a building owner. The form recognizes if you are a tenant, Governor will support you. Inside that form, it will also ask you what is it that you have lost or that you are selling. And I think there is an attestation that says, "I attest that I, the other side, freely states that everything that I put here is nothing but the truth." And I understand that I can be held liable or held in contempt if I give any wrong information. Oda akwe nu form eh motika, mule mawa accurate, but the form says that. And you know, there are different levels of verification. That's why you have the Chairman Lagos East, Chairman Lagos West. You have Honorable Lara Olumegbon, who are members of the working committee. So the members of our committee includes the two chairmen of the local government. The local government are the closest home of government to the people. You have, Honorable Lara is part of the Lada Committee, overseeing everything that is happening. But you also have some other people. Fuad Okie is also part of the Lada Committee overseeing what is going on. Chekwe any Baba ngbe jo, we can go to different people. Then we have a technical committee. That technical committee is headed by the Commissioner for Physical Planning, Dr. Olumide Olainka, who is also your son, a member of this community. He is the chairman of the subcommittee for the technical. The technical are going to be doing, you know, some assessment of the buildings that have been demolished, looking at certain things and giving some advice. And you know, he has with him Digilas, the PS Digilas Sema, PS Safety, General Manager Building Control Agency, and a couple of other people. Nothing stops the subcommittees, Chairman Sa, from also co-opting members of the community. You have called us to several meetings. Even on Sundays, we were here. On Saturdays, we were here. We were here every day. Some of the things that we are doing are regulatory. Because when the fire happened in Mandelas, I mean Honorable Olumegbon and the Commissioner for Special Duties will tell you, our trucks couldn't enter. And in Mandelas, we had to bring down the generators. The most behind us here, you see that on their own, they brought down the generator. Charity begins at home. Ele latin kesho rode. So what it means is that we ourselves must begin to look inwards. First, we must love our neighbor as thyself. That's what the Bible says. You know, at the stakeholder meeting, do you understand what we're hearing? There is this group and that group. There is no group, oh. There is no group. I heard people saying we are counting scores, it's not one-one. There's no scores, oh. This is, I don't want to say it's an act of God, it's human intervention. Do you understand? I mean, it's human accident. Let's take what has happened as an accident. If we cannot love our neighbor, we cannot love ourselves. The greatest commandment in the Bible is love. It draws on love. Ah olorin gokoma koni wani fe eh. Fe eh, fe eh ni ke jire. Eh tukbe, fe eh, fe eh, fe eh ni ke jire. Let us love ourselves. Let us love ourselves. And I want to tell you, there is no oppression that is perfect. But we, as a government, will continue to learn and listen to the people. We are here today to honor you, to listen to you, to join hands with you, to see how this will not happen again, number one. Number two, to see how we support you. Number three, how we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. But before you go, sir, just very quickly, while we were standing, there were people whispering, saying they've heard from the government, but they want to know when, when this is going to happen? When is it going to take place? When will they see, okay? When will they begin to see the activities? Yes, sir, you can sit down, thank you. Please, let's put our hands together. And we are grateful for the Lagos State Government, at least for responding to us. Honorable Bola Olumegbon is here to respond to the question when we will begin to see these responses materialize. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Good afternoon, all. Well, I will throw the line of my predecessor, my brother. I will speak English and Yoruba. Amulu malani ma fishi. Moki bo bo wa oh. Eh ka ro eh ka song oh. Olo wa fofo re mi. Because unto sheleni, awa gontawa begege bi, ashodu joba. Ta wa anbi ba injoye. Amo wepe in konnu wa wu in yonbi ba. Madame eh, whati mini? Aha. To ri ba ti le ye da wo. O wa ambe. A wo mo wa, oni ba wo eslo fa wo kuru ambe. Ti mo de mba o soroi pe. In koto sheleni, eh ire, eh mi re, eh mi wa. Oni ba batiku, ah jeno to jeno. Olo wa de lore eh mi wa, iwele yoni sheleni. Bo bo oroni, my predecessor Otis Soya, said a lot of things, the government plan. But eh mi maso olori, I spread enumeration. The government is not lying. The government is genuine about helping you people. The governor feels for you. To ri joye to wa bi ba. Erico mo lo. Ba ono she wo wu. Cause sento sofmo, o koto seko, we have to do something for these people. But sheh ma epe kota ma sheh no. Koo sheh pe kota ma, koo sheh gidigiri. Oka ma tobo o mamu. Kole wa ye, ko u sheh be. Bo bo koloni o fi, lo nesese. Igmatan sheh bodya cha aruru eleji. Ipe wa ma fa wo kolo. So mo fe jo, mo fe be wa je kafi eh de nu. Let us be patient. What the governor says, we do it. So I just want to inform us that tomorrow, me as the chairman of the working committee in charge of the enumeration, we are starting here tomorrow. We will take each building after the other. If a shop, a building here, how many floors? Eh yo me lo lo ambe. Eh yo me lo lo ni sto. So bashema sheni, everybody no latin ma be, no la. But Lagos Islandi West Chairman, ati, me awon, awon tomba o she she. Even the Market Master, Revenue Officer, ah o kasa losa du bo no. Atos pava so tanibi, bo bo no lo ma wa ambe ni, o la. So building eh, amama muo, layo kon kon. Eh yo me lo, lo wa ni nobi di lo ni shop. Sheh me pa wa lo mi, wa le ni sto ni be. Komani building ni be. Amah take ah o toni sto ni be, you know. Amah ka wa as part of that building. Ipe ah o toni koni nu, building. So eh yoni ki klampu ni moa fe ro. Te wa ni, akito ye, ni bi ba ye. Eh jo, eh mora yo. To ri te ba lo shea, mulu malate lo shee dabba. Ema eh mo eh le, mari kokoba. To ri mo sonjoye, mo sonjoye. Eh mora eh mo ye, you te wa ambe. Eh ni toba ni ki klampu kon. Komah so fe koe unima mu. Komah so fe koe ah o ni ma nu. To ri mo mo ipe, oni sheleni. If you have one key, eh mo eh ah, if you have one key clap, don't come and tell us that you have ten. You have five, no. To ri so bo bo yi, amah pe yipako. Eh de mora yo. Eh ni si oba shea ra ye yo. Ah beni toni koe yo kon, to fe koe ni maji meta, eh te te tako, ipe ro ni. In tori awon eh mi o ni so fe, but sheh me pa local government no ni register ti wo, ah de ma lo register wo. Un ti oba ti tali, eh lu register wo, amah question eh. So eh ni ala yeti mo fe shefua. Ipe ni o la. Eh to de be request eh pe ni ba wo. Processing eh, eh mani su ru. Eh jo, eh mani su ru gon. Sheh mo kato wa bi si, kato take each building. Amah lo joko, amah wo, amah wo de tamah she everything. Eh jo, eh mani su ru fuwa. Ati ni pa she sheo ja. Afir fu ni. Koo sheh epe bo ya, afen ke yo mataja. Ah o eh je te mi no wa ambe. Ni le eh eh, o re de lo ke ya mo, ah o eh yo, o wa ambe. But ah, eh ti to ri wepe, ah atita. Eh wo bo bo building eh bo shee ri. Ah local kidah wa le, mi ti wa le. To je epe te le te le. Ah o le ye ti wa distress. Igmatatye, wa wo bo bo extension, ah shiri ah o le, you wa tu. To je pa wa mi ti wa le. Mo koto, wa anbi ba inje ta. Ele koto ti wa le. Number 19 Dosumu. Wa de tu bakaba. Wa de insurance man ti moba she. Wa le ba tamai, wa ti lo kula. Ki le tomo lo ru mo ju. Boba ku ju be lo. To ba te se, to ba distress, ye oni komalo. Oh la so ye oh. Koo sheh epe ami, ah o le ye, wa ti wa distress, eh ma wo. Imi ba, wa kon ba, wa lo ri she ri she. Cemento ri she ri sheo da. Ne mari eh jo, mo pe wa ni ni to ri o long. Eh she su ru pe luwa. In kota she ti sheo ja ni ye. In to sheh me pa, imahu ah o le eh. Sheh ma te ba kate. Si katabila wa koda. Si kinin koda. Although my, they carry, coboruku. This has a tari. This has a tari, but to lego. Come on, Jack, when but I'm a fair to say. La, Mama, eh, eh, my, break eh. By the time they were doing the demolition. Anything can happen. That is the reason why we've not opened the markets. It's not a thing that we are not feeling, we don't have feelings for you, or we are not being sincere. But we want to do this thing. If you buy, as I'm talking now, the people that will do the, I think the people that will do the eh, integrity test, they're already on site. Doing it, so I want eh, any house that is satisfied, that this house is okay, we will leave the house. But any house. That is not fit. That failed the integrity test, we go. So reason, that is the reason why we've not opened the markets. Cause she eh, I forget, eh, ja. No. To the topa, she demolition, I watch it, testing eh. She eh, the mobile, when you watch, she man, but eh. By the time we are doing the demolition, more one, more, coja, eh, Saturday. Don't she come by eh, Boba, I want to go, Tom, I want that, it's sunny. By the time eh, pillar, to my who, see eh. So she, my town, you're bad, eh, but eh, although my, they carry labo, that is the reason why we've not opened the market. Cause she eh, perfect indefinitely. What they, February, I sorrow. Even Tabak pada. Bobo. Extension eh, Joe ma eh, Joe sa, mbe, one, eh, do eh. Oh, she, I don't know, look, oh, see. Bobo, extension. Bobo, extension. Attachment eh, Joe ma eh, Joe sa, one, eh, do eh. The joba, no, eh. The jobo, they fair, oh, ja, low duty eh. She, my, eh, pretty eh, I want she, more to law, more to boni. Both she eh, I like the jori, I feel eh, co, eh, da, see eh. So Bobo, I want eh, eh, da, eh, low duty eh, to Jack, I want eh, eh, la, fish, eh, eh, oh, ja. Eh, Joe, more eh. Eh, eh, nile, do eh, see eh, 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 nile, do eh, sorry, eh, 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 she eh.
Eh, she, ma, thank you so much. Um, before I invite the next person, we'd just like to recognize the presence, the presence of, um, he says we should simply recognize him as Mr. Fusha Doherty. Please, can we put our hands together? He's a concerned citizen of Lagos. He has come to share his own thoughts with us. Thank you so much for joining us, and thank you for spending your time with us, sir. Thank you so much. And, um, okay. Um, we also have Mr. Guingao Yaringde, he's the Honorable Commissioner on special duties and intergovernmental relations. I would like to hear from him as well, especially about safety and security here in the market. We heard everybody talk about fire incidents. There are things that we should have not been doing in the first place, that would have prevented this fire. We would like to hear from him as he comes to speak to us very briefly. And then we will let you know, um, from ourselves to new central television, there are certain things that we would like to do to help. Honorable Commissioner, sir.
Moki, Bobo, Lene, Ossoyo. Although I'm a fee, oh, for eh, me. Eh, more eh, pay, la, eh, 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 not eh, come. Eh, eh, me, move eh, I, yes, eh, be the, you see eh, this is, I mean, eh, what eh. And eh, Bobo, contact eh, so, like, taro. Cause she, in photo, eh, I, Joe, just see, Bobo eh. In contact eh, so, they recall eh, ni, Bobo, eh, eh. But she, sharele, to sharele eh, oh, yeah, in photo, eh, le, eh, go. Taba, not eh, eh, to fair, eh, eh, she, eh, to sharele eh, oh, eh, to sharele eh, Martin Street, eh, twenty twenty one. Although, you, Jack eh, me, Commissioner for special duty. In my, to be, eh, my, I let, to bag, eh, I let, fat, eh, eh, me, oh, my, consume, Bobo eh. But in, oh, I let, horizontal eh, Bobo, robust eh, boy eh, oh, 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 eh. Can I try, like, the song, be by? Timba, God, eh, like, eh, sorrow, Bobo, in photo, eh, cast eh, now, when you meet eh, so. She, what, Timba, God, eh, like, eh, sorrow, I get eh, I'm, 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 she eh. Oh, yeah, in photo, eh, me, no, eh, in, but eh, eh, ala, God, eh, God eh, to eh, eh, no, eh, 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 eh.
The Tony rule situation, money building, money shop. In order to do, so we will have to do. And it really bachelor is here, money no one know. One fee supporting, insurance is sharing here. She won't continue moving so because time carry. I'm okay, originally insurance lower at the base or low or here. For insurance, it totally is she. For us to be able to assess the benefits of insurance. Oh, but I'll be a lot of the way, where you will continue what in solata or housekeeping. I go to make sure our honorable also, Nipah Generator. Can you be generous or sorry, okay? You will go on, come here, come here, insurance, coachee, co-co-co Lordy day. You don't come here, in comment, I mean, enough for mine, enough for mine, Joe. You know, oh, like you're you. If it's you, you're bad, it's poor. So if you're a mama, give a generator, I see. I go to the cook, there, if it has a friend, first see. So I want management, you're there. Oh, but help, well, I tell you, she room, come by, I told you, it be to generate a more. Or you get a room, I'm money, babe. A K G, only I want fuel. Share it, but go to one other fuel, you know. To go to the financial paper, I do. There are financial show, I do. Everything in the market is like a fuel. I got to make sure, with the way that I think keep on come. Oh, but oh, 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 so more, I want to pay. Eh, I can share a year, come. Timbani shop, but it be, Timo, Tim, Taja. Key where I was, I mean, cut one, it's for me. Although, when they are rough. So that, but he must share, let me come. When you get, we, we will call him a lossy. You run, sure, and start one, only she from her, her one, yeah. Share it, Bobo. Alright, so, so I've been talking about the housekeeping, alright? The way I said that fire drives on one heat. And I said that the way we keep our generators or any machine that produce heat must be in a place whereby there is ventilation. So that when this machine gets heated and they will not catch fire. Second one is that I'm saying that everything we use in the market is like a fuel. Paper is a fuel, cloth is a fuel, wood is a fuel, plastic is a fuel. All these things, we will make sure that we are conscious of where we put them, how we arrange our stores, how we arrange our places. Another advice I'm giving is that you can also separate your shop, where you sell, from where your warehouse is. So that when damage like this happen, it will not be a total loss for all of us. Every other technical things, um, we can then engage insurance company to, to help us put them together and support us in terms of, um, in term of insurance. I pray that this kind of thing will not happen again. But one things we can, one, one of the things we can do in case of eventuality, things that we do not see, we do not expect that will happen, is to take insurance for many things. It's not only fire, it's not only fire. We take insurance for a lot of things, for burglary as well, and you know, for our life, for our life as well. Another insurance we can take, earlier, it's shared, it's shared, and yeah, this has happened. We have to also take care of ourselves. Bobo, eh, 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 promise to watch it from what, although you're about a lie. Eh, Joe, eh, my checky, eh, be pinny, eh, my to do a line. Because then maybe by what, it is not what, actually. Thank you so much. We also like to recognize the presence of Prince Fuad Uki. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you so much for coming, sir.
I go, Kaleo. I go, Roger. To know about Joe, I saw, pardon. She am okay, and yet, I had to surround me. Let me back, she joke, she be, on television, eh. One fee, joke, oh, you know, go me now. Back, she joke, oh, that office. He told you more, I had to borrow, I saw, and yet, I know. I want, Benja, Benja, to so come, I believe. Audit, want to believe, I know. See, Bobo, what about that, see? If I was, so what, what, when you, I did, they, she, I want shop, so I, could not be, I know. What the mama, she say, eh, at the Saturday, at the Sunday, sorry, key, oba, let it take call, report, oh. Eh, me, coffee, she, I know. We, we, God, Joe. But key, I for what, so what, when you, I want, she, look, she, you. He share your, what, Tomo, you, you, I see, what the man, fee, he, I know, how, what? But I will lay. Me, oh, could, dear, cut, to, I want buildings, come, come. I will lay, I want, cut, eh, I'm a she.